Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice of the meeting was posted in the DC Register on the Commission's website, darts.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government Central Meetings Calendar at opend-c.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. A number of us are here at the Commission's office building in Washington DC at 200 I Street Southeast. Excuse me, and a few are joining remotely using Zoom platform. The meeting is live streamed on the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on ancestral lands of the Nacotzcanq and Viscataway people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this Arts Commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Hearing no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. Good evening and welcome to everyone. We have a brief but strong agenda for us to go through today. And towards the end of the agenda, while I'm welcoming everyone, I will be saying bon voyage to one of our colleagues whose tenure on the Arts Commission is coming to an end. But I will talk more about that once we get to it. Our grantee artist spotlight, Robert Pior, Pryor, I'm sorry Pryor, will present. Mr. Pryor?
Hi, it's Piori.
Piori, sorry.
Hey. How are you? How is everybody? Hello?
Good.
Good. Well, I'm super excited to be here with you tonight to share a little bit about some of the work I've been doing for the past 14 years here in Washington. Currently, as always, I think a lot of us artists wear a lot of hats. So I am resident choreographer and one of the resident artists at City Dance, with whom I've been part of the organization since my arrival in 2010. I'm additionally a guest artist and one of the choreographers for Company E, which I was a founding member for that is based in Washington. And I also have my own dance company, which was formerly known as Piori Dance and is now a dual city based between Washington and Buenos Aires, Argentina, called Compania Medusa. And we had our first big concert this year, which I'm super excited about, just last week on June 5th, at the Studio Theatre. And I also currently teach at George Mason University. I'm one of their dance professors. And I run the dance department at the Madeira School in McLean. So that's kind of the list of all the things that I do as an artist in Washington. I'm sure I'm forgetting a couple other places where I work and/or teach. But I also wanted to share a little bit about my work with the Commission and how it has affected my life as an artist. So I have been a fellowship recipient since 2016. And starting in 2018, I received my first project event and festival grant, which has really allowed me to further develop the work that's important to me as an artist. I feel like where I do work in a lot of arts organizations, I'm often given guidelines as to what my work should be about. But as a queer person, I am really excited and interested in creating work that resonates with my community. And we did see Mayor Bowser say that DC is the gayest city in the world. So it's super important to me that I'm able to investigate not just, you know, themes that are individual to the queer community, but how that relates to everybody that's a Washingtonian. In particular, I've worked a lot about the two-sided coin of queer loneliness and queer joy. So I've really, really enjoyed that work. Most recently, my company, like I said, was my 2024 project event and festival grant. I had a performance on June 5th at the Studio Theatre with 12 artists from the area and continuing connecting to my work at George Mason. I'm hoping that I can use my company to help keep some of these really incredibly strong dancers from leaving Washington and giving them work to stay within the District of Columbia. My project event and festival grants have helped me also take some risks. I've been very accustomed to working on just a proscenium stage. But back in 2019, I did my first show at Dupont Underground. So we ended up activating the entire tunnel of the space. It was a collaboration with a few other DC artists, one being House of Bambi. And we activated the entire space. We built out a floor. We used their stage at the end. It was a really interesting experience. And for me, it was without the support of the Commission, I wouldn't have been able to try and expand what I, you know, saw as a creator. I often feel like I put myself in my own boxes. And so that was a really interesting and wonderful experience. I think my only bit of going off of some questions that are, you know, were sent to help me prompt what I say. And so the last part I'm going to talk about is just understanding how the Commission can help and better serve with these grants. The biggest struggle for me, again, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd be able to have, be able to put on shows on my own without the support of the Commission. But that being said, there is a monetary ceiling is what I can receive as an individual. And I think that there, where there is a misbalance is that there, there needs to be a higher ceiling to take into consideration rental for both rehearsal and performances. Or if there's a network or a database where maybe we can be connected with theaters or houses that could maybe help. What's what I'm looking for? Help with finding a space for the show is really the biggest issue I've been having and the cost of what that is and what percentage of my grant that that actually eats up. So, you know, for example, last year, my space usage for my grant was just at 30%. And so that leaves not as much to pay the artists. And that's my number one goal is to not just, you know, I love to pay myself, but more so pay the artists and collaborators that I'm working with. So I think, I mean, like I said, I am super proud to be a Washingtonian. Oh, this year I won the Washington Award from SNR Everme. So that was a really exciting time. And I look forward to continuing to create a safe and inclusive contemporary dance and art space in Washington. And I'm going to only keep trying harder to push the boundaries of what we can create here in Washington. So thank you so much for having me and happy pride.
Thank you. Thank you and happy pride to you and congratulations on your award as well. We love for our folks to get awards. So congrats on that. We'll move on to the public comment portion. And believe it or not, we do not have any public comments this evening. However, the Commission welcomes comments always. They're very important to us. And so we hope that when there's a need to make a comment, people will feel comfortable doing that. I'll move on to the executive director report.
Good afternoon, everyone. This report will be relatively brief. I shouldn't say brief, just shorter than my previous ones, I should say. My name is Aaron Myers. I'm an African-American male wearing a checkered and unfortunately stained shirt with a blue pinstripe jacket. From our staff updates, since our last meeting, CH has hired both an assistant registrar and a public arts manager. I'd like to welcome our new assistant registrar, Luisa Hammond. And she started actually today. And when you get a chance, you may see some of the work that's already beginning out in the gallery. And then Karen Miller will be our new public arts manager. And we'll be onboarding her in July, which is exciting. Our second point under the DC Music Census update, and this is something I'm very proud of. The DC Music Census that went live on April 10th garnered nearly 3,000 participants. I would like to take the time, this time to thank all of the musicians, the producers, the managers, the stagehands, and others who completed the census. This was part of a national cohort of cities organized by Sound Music Cities that include Baltimore, Cleveland, New Orleans, and Minneapolis. Next, we will simultaneously launch the dance and theater census later this year. And I would like to say this is really poignant because I believe, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, our participation was ranked third in the entire cohort of all the cities that participated, which is amazing. And we had more participation in this census than the first time they did this pre-pandemic. So this is saying something to our reach and the outreach that we've been doing from this agency. We'll next go to the Art Bank. This year, our Public Arts Department has received a record number of submissions from the Call of Art for the Art Bank. The Public Arts Department sent out the Call for Art on April 18th with a deadline of May 28th. During that time, we received nearly 300 applicants, which is 298 to be exact. And that update will be coming around to everybody. Thank you to the Public Arts, the Outreach and Communications Team for all of your hard work in this endeavor, as well as your work in the upcoming Toast to the Boogie events, which I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more about. From a grant standpoint, calls for art for both the art exhibition and the Public Art Building Grants have gone out. The Art Exhibitions Grant is a competitive program that provides support for the development and public presentation of visual art exhibitions by district resident curators. The application deadline for this grant is Friday, July 1st, 2024. I'll put a quick note. I didn't realize how popular this particular grant was until this weekend when, at an event, three different people asked, can I give them the hookup to make sure they were able to do it? And I had to express that, no, I could not, but I do encourage you to apply. I'm glad I'm able to say that at a public meeting. The artists and art organizations must apply for the Public Art Building Communities Grant by Monday, July 22nd. So multiple awards may be given and the award amounts may vary, all right? And so I do encourage you to reach out to our curator, Michelle May, Dr. Michelle May Curry. That's on our website. We're moving forward with the move of the grant managers to the former Aquamie Space in the building. For our new commissioners, the space is the very space you see when you first enter the building to the left. Following our last meeting, an approximate timeline has been set for the end of this fiscal year. Also, there will be a new round of grants opening on June 5th, including the fellowship grant. Grants will have more information on that in their report. And again, to those, I'm learning, being in this position, that more people know about our grants, but it's exciting to be a part, or exciting to see when people are learning about our grants and wanting to be a part of that. That's really exciting to feel that energy at an event that was not related to CH at all and people who are just excited to just try it out. It means that we're making progress in the right direction. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is Julianne. I am an Italian-Irish American living here in the nation's capital, year 21. I'm wearing a sleeveless flowery blouse today. At the last full commissioner meeting, the chairman stated that the executive would report on the status of the strategic plan at today's meeting. I would love, and I think a lot of other commissioners would love, an update outside of the, where the contract is, because we have been updated on that. And what is the expectation of board members, commissioners, in the strategic plan process? And to clarify that it needs to be done by October in order to align with our NEA funding. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll answer the last part first. We've reached out to the NEA. And so they have been not only understanding, we are not the only agency with certain deadlines, and that deadline would not prohibit us from receiving any NEA funds whatsoever. And we're not the only agency who have gone through a procurement process that has taken us beyond and outside of those lines. So I will start with that. At the last meeting, I'm not sure as far as the contract update was concerned, some of the issues that we dealt with was as far as last year, when the last strategic plan was done, I think we did a procurement, and David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, for $150,000. And OCP chose a firm that was not at that rate. We chose a firm that was at $86,000. Being that that was the case, we put forth a contract under $100,000. OCP feels that maybe that this could go over that. And so it switched contract administrators. And we've had just a bit of pushback when it comes to that. Board, as far as commissioner participation, will, I believe, depend on the scope of work that will be presented by some of the person who has awarded the grant. I know that depending on what process, whatever the company is chosen by OCP for us to do it, they would probably be able to outline exactly how we would work closely together. I know that to keep prices and costs down and below $120,000, we have offered as a suggestion of taking our current strategic plan and being able to update it and to use that as possibly a foundation to start with. However, most of this will depend on the company that is chosen. So we have done some market research. We reached out to the National Assemblies of State Art Agencies to give us a list of strategic plan companies. Out of the list, we saw, I did the initial research. And based upon the feedback from other states, we narrowed that list down to four or five. And then we began to do our quote process. We waited to hear back from these companies with those said quotes. Once those quotes did come back, we began putting together our paperwork for OCP. And then we're working with them now. So I would have more information as far as what board involvement once a company is decided upon. We are, I'm happy that with the companies that I believe will apply, that they would work even better with us than what we may have experienced before.
Okay, I'd like to request that this goes on our agenda for our next meeting so that we're able, just because a lot of the things that go into the strategic plan play into what we as commissioners in our service role need to participate in. So I want to make sure as we go through July, August, September, October, that this is on the agenda for each meeting. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I anticipated your question, excuse me, a desire for the board to be involved, if not interviewed, in the process. So as best we can make that happen, I think that's important. I can tell you the last time, and I don't, we don't have many commissioners still here who were there then. I think I was the only person that they spoke to. And did they speak to you, interview you? They didn't interview the entire board. I'm not sure who all they did. They interviewed, okay, okay, so good. So let's try to keep the process we had before. Good. The strategic plan that was done.
Are we supposed to be activating it?
No, no, we need to update it because it's been three years, right? So we need to, yeah, it happened when I first arrived. So we need to update or rewrite it. Yeah, time flies when you're having fun. So, good. Any other questions to Aaron? Thank you. Thank you for the report. I'll go to the executive committee report. And as chair of the executive committee, I will give the report. The executive committee met on Thursday, June 13th. We had three major agenda items. The first was a bylaws update. The Governance Committee presented the amended bylaws to the executive committee. And I will not steal Julianne's thunder because she will report in this meeting today. So Julianne, I'll let you deliver the details of what was discussed at the executive committee with respect to bylaws. Second, we talked about the status of grants automation. The agency has identified two post-award tracking systems for 2025 and one new system for pre-award. So we're trying to make progress against moving into the 20th century, if not the 21st century, with the way we do our paperwork around here. And last, agency sponsorships. The staff has prepared a sponsorship system which is nearing finalization. The executive director has committed to circulating a sponsorship process to the commissioners no later than the September commission meeting for our review. So we will look at that and try to move towards being clear and deliberate about the notion of sponsorships. I'll ask anybody who was at the executive committee meeting, did I miss anything of importance other than the bylaws which Julianne will talk about?
I just want to clarify that what was committed to at the executive committee meeting was that the, I'm sorry, the whole thing went away and I don't have it in front of me. But that it wasn't going to be presented at the full commission meeting. It was going to be presented at the September executive committee meeting. That's what was outlined in the actual meeting.
Good. I was going to let you cover that in your Governance Committee report.
No, no, I'm talking about the agency sponsorships.
Oh, the sponsorships.
Yes, that the executive was, during the meeting, what was committed to was it being in front of the executive committee and that the executive committee was looking at it, not, it wasn't going to the full commission.
Good, that's, okay. That's good clarification. Good. Any other comments, questions? We'll go on to the Finance Committee report. Has Kimber joined us? Is Kimber here? In Kimber's absence, is there a Finance Committee report person?
Kimber is here and...
Oh, good. Muffled. Most people don't want to hear my full voice. Is that better?
Hi, I was here. I was just watching you all.
How are we looking? Are we looking good?
I think I need to be a panelist. I'm just going to be in Washington. Good afternoon, good evening. All right, so we got a finance update. So I think we actually, Brandon, Brandon's with us, he as well, who has joined in and jumped right in with Martine. So we had an opportunity to meet actually just on Friday. And so you have in your finance update sort of a detailed review of where we are as we kind of close out the fiscal year. But I think really looking at that, I mean, at high level, there's probably not a ton of changes since we last met. And as Julianne mentioned in the executive, I think we had some conversations around the sponsorships piece and really working closely with the executive director as we worked to both finalize that going into our next budget cycle and kind of getting that process tightened up around sponsorships. But overall, I mean, I'm happy to walk us through just briefly what we have in the budget report. Goodness, lost you. All right, so if we go to the next slide, thirteen. And Brandon, feel free, if you've got any additional context around this, but a lot of this is sort of where we are as we close out. We've got, this gives us high level, right, of the overall budget. And really here, I think it's looking at the percentage available, right? The sum of the available budget that's still available as we, as we sort of wind down that 22%.
Those of us with bad eyesight, could you tell us what we're looking at but not seeing?
Sure. This is just high level, like total administrative, right? What percentage of the budget, the grand total of our budget? And then what has been, what's out as expenditures, the sum of what's been committed, right? And then the sum of the available budget.
What are those percentages? Share the percentages with us.
Sure. So of the administrative total percent available, it looks 43%. Grand total, 18% of the allocation of that percentage of the budget and for a total of 22% available. And this kind of breaks us down even further, which I think this is again, a newer view of what we've seen, which gives us some more detail inside of those line items, which was something that was requested just as we continue to work in the spirit of transparency. So you can sort of see on this one, on the administrative budget, the sum of the total budget and some of those larger line items and where we are against that on the administrative total. So taking that, what we just saw on the previous page, and just breaking it down a little bit further in each of the categories. And then again, in grants as well. So this allows people to really see in those different cohort categories where we are against the total in terms of the total budget and then what's remaining of that 18% in the government grants.
Yep.
That's what I got.
So again, I know the slides are hard to read, but not much has changed anyway, so.
Not much has changed. That's right. Not much has changed.
Questions, comments from the commissioners? Thank you, Kimber. Grants Committee, Gretchen.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Gretchen Wharton, I have on glasses. Seems like I have on everything beige tonight, almost including the hair, for those of you who keep telling me about that. And welcome to everyone and happy summer. Our new FY25 summer grants have now opened. FY25 Arts and Humanities Education Project, Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program, Field Trip Experience, and Capital Projects Grants opened on Wednesday, June the 12th, and they'll close on Tuesday, July 16th. Please make note of those dates and look at our website so you can make sure that your applications are in on time. For the Arts and Humanities Education Project, it furthers CAH's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in DC by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education, and service organizations who significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class cultural capital. The Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program, by the way, everything that I'm reading, you can see on our website. It further CAH's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia by supporting qualified individual artists and humanities practitioners who significantly contribute to DC. AHFP recognizes the impact of individual artists and humanities practitioners within the District of Columbia and supports the vitality that those individuals bring to the local community. The grant opportunity encourages progress in the arts and humanities by sustaining, highlighting, and elevating the accomplishments of individual district-based artists and humanities practitioners. All of the disciplines are listed below there for you to see. Field Trip Experience. Field Trip Experience furthers CAH's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education, and service organizations who significantly contribute to DC as a world-class cultural capital. The FTE Grant Program supports the cost of field trip tickets, professional development opportunities for classroom educators, and pre- and post-field trip workshops for students. Funding may also be allocated to necessary personnel support for the planning of these particular projects. Capital Projects. Capital Projects furthers CAH's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in DC by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education, and service organizations. It supports organizations that own or rent facilities, intend to own facilities, or seek capital project support for permanent property, technology, equipment, or digital assets designed for the training, management, production, or presentation of performances. I noticed that our... I noticed that our speaker before, who was, one of our guest speakers, talked about perhaps tweaking this. So we certainly are listening to what you're saying. And if that's the case, when we have our grants revamp process, we will definitely keep in mind your suggestion to this particular grant. The grants panels are underway. Grants team is currently busy reviewing applications for the following FY25 programs. So if you call your grants managers and they seem a little tired and exhausted, it's because they are. General operating support, we have eleven panels, two hundred and twenty-four applicants. East Arts has two panels with forty-one applicants. Project Events and Festivals, nine panels, fifty applicants, organizations, and a hundred and twenty-nine individual applicants. That's a lot of applications and quite frankly, I'm thrilled about it. I'm really thrilled that the word is out and so many of you are applying to the commission for money. Stay tuned, the second round of panels for these programs will begin in early August. For those of you who want to be panelists, we still have opportunities. They may be in August, but some of you stay home, don't go on vacation all of August and come and be a panelist. The grants team is expanding. There's been a posting for two additional grants managers and that posting has closed. And two, and we're currently interviewing applicants. The finalization should be in about two weeks. And with that, we will have two additional grants managers that will help everything. Of course, they have a learning curve, but we're going to hire some really good people and that will help get our grants through the system and out to you. Thank you.
First, congratulations and thanks to the grants team and the grants committee as well and Gretchen. This is amazing. Erin was observing for me that the number of grantees and applicants is larger than ever, which is both a comment on the need in, out in the world, but also how we have let people know we're here and people are willing to take the chance to apply as opposed to assuming upfront, I'm not going to get it anyway, so why waste my time? So all of this is what we put in place when we first arrived, coming out of the task force and equity, inclusion and belonging. So thanks and congrats to everybody. Questions, comments from the other commissioners on the grants? We'll go to governance, Julianne.
All right, hello again. Okay. And the, I love this fade out that's happening. I don't know if the public can see that, but it's very, it's really, it's a whole vibe when you do this virtually. The governance committee met on June tenth at ten AM over Zoom and I was there. And committee member Chase Maggiano was there. Our chairman, Reggie Van Lee, was in attendance as well as our vice chair, Gretchen Wharton. And our, our staff person assigned to our committee, David St. John, was also in attendance. As we have been doing since February two thousand twenty-four, the governance beginning, began our work at amending, updating, streamlining our, the bylaws for CAH. The whole goal was to really enhance the flow of communication among commissioners, between commissioners and staff and with the public via our public meetings. The governance committee, I already said that, sorry, the chairperson, okay, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm a little crazed today. We had a pretty lively and collaborative discussion and further edits were actually made within the meeting, which was exciting. And then it went to the executive committee for review on June thirteenth. If you are watching this meeting right now, when it's happening or later after it's happened, you will see that the Word doc, Bylaw Amendments, an Excel tracking doc of bylaw amendments is highlighted. That means blue. It means it's a hyperlink. So you can go to the commission website and get into those documents. If you open the Word document, everything that is highlighted yellow means it's an amendment. If you want to see what's new, like we added that we're going to do the land acknowledged. We have the land acknowledgement in our bylaws now, which I'm very excited about. You will see that in the Excel tracking doc. What, the governance committee is going to meet again on August twelfth at ten AM to make further edits perhaps. If any of the committee chairs, as you hold your committee meetings between now and through the month of July, I'm asking that you bring this up at your meetings and review the information and get back to myself and the committee members if you have any further edits or suggestions. And then this will go for a full vote on August nineteenth. If anyone else is interested in joining the governance committee, it's a great time at the beginning of the new fiscal year coming up. We could use the help and it would be great. I do want to also just extend a thank you to David St. John for his work and David Martins, David Martins on his work in helping to get the bylaw edits together. And that is all for the governance committee. Thank you.
Again, similar to my thanks to the grants team. I know this was a lot of work and so thank you, Julianne, and thank you to your governance committee for doing this. Any questions or comments from the commissioners on the governance committee report? If not, thank you again. We'll go to IDEA, IDEA committee. Cecily.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Cecily Habimana. I am wearing a navy and white sleeveless dress. And I just want to give you a quick update on the IDEA committee. Last week, we met on Friday, June fourteenth to review the key tasks and accomplishments. And the IDEA committee continues to make progress towards completing the forty-four recommendations. We're excited to show you all this, I don't know if you guys can share the report on the screen. But when you do, you'll be able to see the progress we've made since April. The recommendations that we've completed in April was at about thirty percent. Currently at, in June, we are at nearly forty-eight percent completion rate. The recommendations that we have in progress. There we go. All right, so let's scroll down just a little bit to the orange and white chart. I know it may be small on the screen, but no. Perfect. Okay, so just to review, the recommendations complete since April's mark was at thirty percent and currently we're at forty, forty, nearly forty-eight percent. And then in terms of in-progress recommendations, we, in April, we were at thirty-four percent and currently we're at thirty-eight percent in progress in terms of those recommendations. There, we do still have about six that we have not started yet. But that is down from sixteen that was the amount that we hadn't started in, in April. So all that together, we're at an eighty-six percent completion rate and we'll continue to work through all of these recommendations moving forward. So during our meeting, as some of you all may see, I'm thirty-eight weeks pregnant. So I, we talked with Chairperson Reggie Van Lee and continued after this meeting, because I wasn't even sure if I would be here today. He's going to be the interim IDEA committee chair, starting, I guess, tomorrow until I get back from maternity leave, which should be early October. If there are any other people that are interested in joining the committee, we are welcoming them as well to help support these efforts. The biggest thing that we talked about during the June, June meeting was the combining two recommendations. And that's the recommendation eighteen and nineteen. Originally, it says that it's, we should enlist and actively seek new panelists that represent the community. That was recommendation eighteen. And then nineteen said, it said, choose a diverse group of panelists, excuse me, who best reflect the composition and demographics of our city and who are advocates for the arts community. And so we're going to be combining those two recommendations because they're kind of similar. And the, the main point of it is to enlist and actively seek new panelists that represent the community. Under that section, you'll see that there are a number of ideas on how to basically actively seek new panelists that represent the community. In terms of recommendation number thirty-one, the original one talked about, it says, based on the findings of the, based on findings of the baseline data, consider establishing an open application period for special projects for emerging and expanding artists, artistic organizations. What we're working through now is just making, by making sure that we have that baseline data. We're collecting that information. And with that, we've decided that we wanted to split that action into two actions. First is, is making sure that we have that reference baseline data and then we can work from there so that we can continue to move forward and, and measure against that baseline data. So I am going to be turning this over to Clara, the department lead. She's going to go through some of the activities that the commission participated in in the last month. And I think she's virtual.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to also make sure you all can see me as well, but that might not be possible. Can you see me?
We see you.
Yep, we see you.
Okay, that's a start. Thank you. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Clarith Landry. I am the Chief Inclusion, Equity, Diversity and Accessibility Officer. I'm wearing a purple and light striped dress, collared dress. And I have braids with curls in my hair and my pronouns are she, her and hers. High level, our IDEA team represented the agency at two events that represent the, two of the monthly observances that we're going to highlight for this month of June. One being Black Music Month, the second being Pride Month respectively. The first two events that you'll see in our notes here, one was participating with Executive Director Aaron Myers at the White House, June teens, protecting and honoring our nation's African-American history. That was last Monday, June tenth. It was an incredible program hosted by the White House Domestic Policy Advisor, your attendants, several leaders from the Office of Public Engagement, the National Endowment of the Arts, the National Endowment of Humanities, and several other offices that spoke to the value of contributions of black artists and protecting their contributions of the black community to arts and what can be done from here while reflecting on those contributions. And so it was really a conversation around uplifting national narratives of slavery and freedom. The second event, also on June tenth, was the IDEA team was able to attend the Stars Take the Lead program that was in partnership with the Recording Academy and held at the Recording Industry Association of America. And essentially, this was an opportunity to have a conversation around the value of DEIA across all art disciplines, but mostly in music. And several performers, artists, actors, you name it, spoke to the value of DEIA, exploring the diversity of black music and knowledgeable about said contributions through the creative disciplines and musical genres. And excited to see what other conversations come out of that as we continue to have further conversations with the Recording Academy. And then lastly, we were able to attend the inaugural Kennedy Center Drag Ranch with performances from DC's, Washington DC's own drag performing community. First time that this was ever done. It took place this past Sunday, yesterday. And very excited to see how the center continues to celebrate diversity across historically, across different areas and identities that have not always been able to be celebrated there, but they're moving in a direction that is even more inclusive and they're excited about it. Lastly, I'm going to actually queue this over to our program assistant for the IDEA team, Logan Brown. But we mentioned back in April that our team had an opportunity to attend the National Diversity and Leadership Conference across four days in Dallas, Texas, talking about key themes, the direction of DEIA and really what we can bring back to better serve our teammates at the agency, our commissioners, and of course, our, the artists across the Washington DC artistic landscape. So I'm going to turn this over to Logan to share a little bit more about that experience.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Clara. My name is Logan X. Brown. I am the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Accessibility Program Assistant. I'm a black male with a short haircut and a gray sweater on. I've taken the time to create a quick video basically of the twentieth annual Diversity and Leadership Conference. I have captured our team's camaraderie, the lessons learned, some insightful panels we attended and our intentional outreach to other state and city art and culture centers. So, thank you and enjoy.
Logan, do you want to just talk through what's coming on the screen since we can't hear the audio? At this point, it's mostly music.
Right, yes. So we attended the Hilton Anatoly, or Anatol, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Logan, Logan, give us one moment. We're going to try to play it from our end. Am I correct? Yes, let's play it from our end. I think that might be helpful. I think we sometimes know when we share on Teams or Zoom or things of that nature, sometimes the sound doesn't go over.
Who are your biggest challenges and how do you overcome them?
Well. Where do I start? Oh, my God.
Oh, my gosh.
The minorities come behind me because of my success. So remember, if you're not successful, it's going to close the door and that gives them a reason to say, oh. See, DEI don't work. Uh-oh, uh-oh, see, diversity, mm-mm, don't work. See, so we can't fail.
So much, Logan, for your hard work. And that concludes our, uh, presentation for today.
Good, well, thank you, questions, comments? Congrats to the team on, uh, going and getting that information and bringing it back to us. Um, I'll stick in a plug now because a couple of the committees have said, committee chairs have said, if anybody wants to join my Committee, so to our three new Commissioners, I encourage you to join one or two Committees and any that you want to go on want you. So you don't have to worry about that.
May I say something about that? Have they been on-boarded yet?
They will be on-boarded, uh, next month, they've got, they've already got to do the poll, I think that is July sixteen. July sixteenth.
Yeah, because jumping on the Committee now unless you're going to really take the time to tell them what it is so they be equipped or interested to do it. I don't know if we should wait until after they're onboarding. I mean, they can do it anytime they want to, but I don't think they know very much right now.
Well, some, some chairs have already like twisted people's arms, but you're right. I mean, they'll have a better understanding once they go through the orientation. And we old, what do you want to call us, already Commissioners are invited to that as well. So that information will go out to everybody as well. But I do encourage you to start thinking now about what one or two Committees you want to set on. Um, we're almost at the end of our agenda, we have the two Special Committee updates. And, um, as Chair of the Art Week DC, uh, Special Committee, I will report now. And I'm happy to say that we've actually made some real progress. The first of which is, we have officially named the event. It is officially Art Week DC. No, 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 it's Art Week DC, then followed by the year. So each year will, Art Week DC twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, et cetera. Uh, we've held a number, actually dozen productive stakeholder meetings, including recent convening at the Meridian House with embassies from Australia, Brazil, China, Colombia, Denmark, the European Union, Germany, Italy, Japan, Portugal, Trinidad and Tobago and Yemen in attendance. The support and enthusiasm from these embassies has been tremendous. As discussed in our stakeholder sessions with other DC government agencies, there's a strong interest in a soft launch of this Art Week DC idea this year in twenty twenty-four. And we're actively forming plans for this preview event. Presently, we're working diligently to finalize potential sites for the twenty twenty-four preview. And I'll tell you that we have some great and exciting possibilities there. While, uh, we also are seeking a consultant, if there's no objection, I will commit to leading the twenty twenty-four preview, preview alongside our dedicated staff. We're ideating on leveraging and showcasing, uh, things we already have in play. Our Art Bank Artists, for artists, our Poetry Out Loud Artists in the spoken word, involving approximately four galleries, several embassies and possibly incorporating dance, culinary arts and fashion. We're also exploring how to best coordinate what Art All Night twenty twenty-four to maximize impact and community engagement. So, there's more in the works that I can talk about right now, but know that we're moving towards some really exciting approach to this. And our intention for the staff in particular is to have a specific staff meeting where we can talk about this as a full staff, so that everybody really understands where we're going and can have input to where we're going before it's, you know, written in stone. At the same time, Art Week DC twenty twenty-five planning must commence. We're making significant progress in identifying potential sites and have contemplated three metro accessible locations across different wards. Now, the strong advice we got from the Art Basel people was, they wish they had started with multiple locations and not just one. And we don't want to have too far spread out, but we've found three sites that we're excited about that put us in different wards in the city. As we near completion of our request for proposal to secure a consultant to guide our efforts, we must still drive the process in the absence. Current thoughts include aligning Art Week DC twenty twenty-five with Art All Night twenty twenty-five to create a more cohesive and impactful event. We're exploring further ideas and opportunities to enhance the event, leveraging our resources and partnerships. Therefore, we encourage everyone to join the Art Week DC twenty twenty-five Special Events Committee meeting to provide your valuable input and help shape the upcoming events. Uh, this concludes my update on Art Week DC twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. We're excited about the progress and look forward to your active participation and valuable contributions as we move forward with these plans. But I will take questions or comments now if you have them. Good, um, the Foundation Report, Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and I apologize, can you all hear me? Can you all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Awesome, I apologize, I apologize if you hear my, uh, wonderful daughter in the background, but she's as excited about the Foundation than I am. Um, the Foundation Committee met on Monday, June tenth, uh, just recently. In attendance were Commissioners, uh, well, myself, uh, as Community Chair, Commissioner Van Lee and community members, Terrell Johnson and Jenny Billfields. We, uh, during this meeting, quite an interesting meeting, we discussed the various ways that a potential Foundation could have a connection with the Commission. And I will put a huge asterisk in front of all this, that these are just ideas that we're throwing around. We will start to, uh, narrow things down for a set of recommendations. But, um, what we were kind of looking at is ways that the Commission, the Foundation could, formally or informally have connections, uh, ongoing. This could include the possibility of, um, board member inclusion from a CAH officer, uh, shared space, shared resources, periodic realignment of the Foundation's goals to, uh, to match city funding and needs of the Commission. Um, but the overall umbrella under which we are operating is that the, um, the Foundation needs to be able to serve artists and organizations that can't be effectively served by, uh, CAH. So again, trying to, to make sure that we're not, um, you know, sort of reinventing the same wheel or working on the same things at the same time. And that, that's sort of the general ethos that's going to guide, uh, granting priorities, uh, for a possible Foundation. At our next meeting, we plan to begin in earnest, uh, writing out and finalizing recommend, some recommendations, um, which will result in a report that the Committee will share with the Commission. And that's all I have, other than, uh, being responsive to any questions that anybody might have.
Questions, comments? My one question, which I think you know the answer to, is we're still working towards the Foundation being in place and time to help fundraise for Art Week DC twenty twenty-five.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes, yeah, yeah. We, 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 we do know that it would be probably a three to four month, uh, turnaround uh, with, uh, by engaging a lawyer, uh, to get the paperwork set up and then, um, expedited, uh, to, to, you know, to get the, get the proper paperwork to, to be able, be able to solicit funds. We can start doing some informal talking about that stuff now, um, but, but, uh, that's probably a little premature. But, but we do know at least the timeline would be three-ish to four-ish months, uh, just to, to quickly get that done.
Any questions, comments from the Commissioners? Uh, we have no unfinished business, but the new business I sort of foreshadowed in the beginning. I want to take this opportunity at this time to thank Commissioner Jack Evans for his service to the Commission. This is Jack's last meeting and though his service has been brief, he's been dedicated and diligent in his duties as a CAH Commissioner. Since his appointment by Chairman Middleton, Jack has not missed one meeting and was an active participant, willing to provide his perspective on all agency issues. His knowledge of the inner workings of the city have been a great assistance to us all. Jack, you were a great addition to the Commission, we wish you all the best and is, uh, is our, um, our, uh, what is it, custom, thank you. We have a piece of art from a DC artist for you to come and receive. So join me in thanking Jack for his service. We still care.
Very much, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the beautiful piece of art and the opportunity to serve. I am, uh, in a dark blue suit with a, uh, white shirt. And in the words of, uh, one of my great friends, colleagues, uh, Mayor Marion, Marion Barry, who can, uh, be confirmed by my great friend Cora Barry. Uh, Jack, you're the whitest white man I've ever seen. So that would, uh, that would describe me, even his dog was white, remember he said that? Uh, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the, uh, Commission of Arts and Humanities. Uh, as many, even though I was on the Council for thirty years and for a number of those years had oversight over, uh, the Commission and although I was the Finance Chair for a number of years too, my passions on the Council were the arts and sports. Part of it driven by the fact that I have triplets, three children, two of which are artists. And, uh, I know the struggles that young artists have in trying to, first of all, get recognized and, and to somehow try and afford to be artists. And so, that's why this Commission is so important in supporting all of our young, talented artists who are so often overlooked in, uh, in our city and in our country. Uh, first, I want to thank, uh, our Chairman Reggie, you've been a fabulous Chairman. Thank you for your support, your ongoing support, and you are doing an excellent job, uh, leading, uh, this Commission. Uh, Aaron, to you and your staff, again, uh, all of you have been tremendously supportive. Uh, you're very talented and thank you for your support of me, but more importantly, for your support of this Commission and making it a, uh, a very, very strong entity. And to the Commissioners, um, we have twelve excellent Commissioners, including the Chair. And, uh, it, best of luck going forward. Uh, you have a very, uh, exciting job, as I would see it. One of my, uh, goals on the Council was to strengthen, uh, the Commission. And now we have more money than, uh, we have ever had in the past and more, as Gretchen pointed out, more people interested in participating than we've ever had in the past. So if one were to sum up what is the state of the Commission today, I would say very strong. And so, um, although I'm leaving the Commission, I'm not leaving my interest in art. And so if there is any time, place in the future that I could be of assistance, uh, I stand ready to do that. And, uh, know full well, uh, when I leave here today, my support and dedication and interest in, uh, the future of art in our city will always be there and always be very strong. So again, thank you all for your support, your, uh, confidence, all of your kind words. And, uh, I look forward to serving with you as a private citizen and really, really improving art for all of our citizens in the District of Columbia. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack, thank you. So on that high note, there be no further business. The next meeting of the Commission will be held Monday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at five thirty PM. The time is now six thirty-three and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.